Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Meeting to Order. If the clerk would take the roll, please.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tompkins?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Greathouse?
Here. You would stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Second?
I have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the Human Services Committee this evening? Seeing none? Any updates? Carrie? Or Howard, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just a couple. I attended the Michigan Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Lansing, and a couple things, issues were raised over there that I think we need to look into. The first one is apparently there's a move underway to do something about these big-box stores that go out of business. And apparently what they've been doing in their deed restrictions is putting all kinds of restrictions in the deed that can't, for example, if that Super Kmart went out in Port Huron, can't be used as a grocery store, can't be used as a retail store, so on. Then they go plead poverty before the assessor so that the assessed value of the store goes virtually to zero. And, you know, we're out all of that revenue as a county, schools, everything else. And by putting these deed restrictions in there, they basically are creating what some of the people in Lansing are called "retail blight" because you can't do anything with this big box, and it sits there. The second thing I did, I attended a meeting on the Prosperity Regions. As you know, they're assigning us to Prosperity Region 6. The presentation was from Prosperity Region 2, which is Traverse City. And I asked specifically, you know, the fact that we want to continue our relationship with the Council of Governments of Southeast Michigan, Semcog. And they said, "Oh, that's no problem. They won't make you leave that." Well, that's not what we were told. We were told we were out of the Council of Southeastern, Semcog, and we were in Region 6. So, I don't know how that's going to play out.
Who told you that, Howard? Was that somebody from the state that actually?
That was the first, the first time they brought it up. That's basically the position they took. You're in Region 6.
Who?
I think that was at our I-69 Next Michigan Development Corporation meeting when it was first brought up. But in terms of a name, I don't have a name.
Was that a state rep?
No. No. No, in fact, I don't even think a lot of the state reps even knew what was going on when they first rolled that, that region, Prosperity Region, concept out. I personally don't think it's going to ever fly, you know. I really don't. So, I don't know if we need to worry that much about it, but...
It's good information to know, but I think you're probably right. I'm not sure that one's ever going to get off the ground completely.
Yeah. The other thing I attended was, there was quite a bit of discussion about Proposal 1. And the big emphasis was make sure people understand that once this passes, that money that's associated with gasoline, all of that, will be directed toward roads, and it will be constitutionally guaranteed. Right now, any sales tax money is not going to the roads, and so the people can really take care of that oversight. One of the more interesting meetings I attended was on marijuana. And that was the last day. The interesting thing about it...
Medical marijuana or just marijuana?
Medical marijuana.
All right.
And how some of the states are starting to deal with it, including maybe even Michigan. And that is that they're going away from recommending smoking marijuana because that's bad for your health, and you're only doing that for one reason, and that's to get high. But they're going to pharmacists, they're employing pharmacists and doctors, they're looking at what, apparently there's a wide variety of things you can treat with, depending on which variety you use. So they're looking at the variety, the concentration, and medically what the purpose of it is. For example, they gave an example where if you have to go through chemotherapy for cancer, and that happens more and more to people, what they do a half hour, an hour before you go in for the chemotherapy, they give you this particular concoction of marijuana. It's in like a shake. You take it an hour before, and then that reduces all the nausea that is associated with chemotherapy and the pain. You don't get high from it. So if you were looking to do that, sorry, Charlie. The other one is that treating people with epilepsy. They found that there are some varieties of that that are really effective for treating epilepsy. So what they're trying to do now in New York, Pennsylvania, and Minnesota is move toward legislating medical marijuana where it's more, shall we say, scientifically applied, which I think is the direction that, that I think, based on what the one representative staffer said, that's the direction they would like to take in Michigan.
Very good.
But do away with that. That was it.
Anything else? Okay, very good. To report, thank you. Conceptual initiatives?
Nothing.
I see no old business, new business. Item 7A Immunization Billing Grant from the Health Department. Greg, you gonna do this one? We're looking at about a $20,000 ask with no match.
Correct. They had, the state had some grants for immunization billing available that weren't accepted. Originally, we weren't supposed to be able to apply for this grant, but they contacted us directly because no other takers were out there, and we decided that we could definitely enhance our billing like we did through the last grant. So we did go ahead and prepare a budget and apply for the grant.
This is not similar to the breastfeeding one that we just did recently, is it?
It's very similar. Matter of fact, they've already indicated with, if I get your approval tonight, we will receive the $20,000 grant, but we're not bringing on any staff. This is going to be, we are going to be able to purchase some hardware with this, some new, and some training for the new coding, for medical billing. So we should be able to hopefully even increase our revenues and billing more than we do now, and we are still one of the best in the state at recouping revenue through billing.
Any questions for Greg?
This is for final action, it's going to go to the full board. I'll make a motion that it goes to the full board.
Does it need to, though? I mean, it's just a no, whatever, and you want to do it for full, final action?
I'll make a motion for final action.
Support. Okay, I have a motion and a support for final action to send this on, or I mean, to approve it tonight. Any other discussion? Any comments from any commissioners? Hearing none? Let's do a roll call vote. No, we don't need a roll call, do we? Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Heidemann?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greathouse?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. 7B, the Health Department's Plan of Organization. That is a long plan.
Yes, it is.
Who did that?
You're looking at him.
How long did it take you? Never mind. Let's get on.
Well...
Can you give it to us in a...
Yeah, I'm not going to go through that page by page. Let me tell you what the purpose is and why we need it. Under the Public Health Code, we are required to meet certain criteria to be considered a local health department under the Public Health Code. And every three years, we get accredited by the state to make sure that we are doing minimum programs per the state health code. This plan of organization is just to prove essentially that we have a legally approved budget by the Board of Commissioners, that we, it explains the laws that we are enforcing, our local groups that we attend, and it's just to demonstrate that we are a lawful local health department per Act 368, the Public Health Code. So we have to demonstrate all those things, and we have to do this every three years, get it approved by the Board of Commissioners, and send it into the state prior to our accreditation date, which is in November this year.
Once this is approved, it's good for five years?
Three years.
Three years?
Yep.
Any questions for Greg on the project he has there?
You know, I got a quick question, I guess, for both you two is, I know we've talked about the state restructuring of the, you know, Health Department organizations. Any clear path on that yet at all? Kind of the direction that they're going in, more...
In a word, no.
No, really?
No, no, we haven't heard, especially with the recent merger of Michigan Private Committee Health with DHS.
Okay.
We just now are getting some preliminary organizational charts, but I think that's all going to happen up there for a while before it actually comes down.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other, more questions? Okay, I'm open for a motion to send it on to the board then.
So moved.
Second?
And a second. Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, thanks, Howard. Any other discussion? All in favor of sending this on to the full board?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, it will go to the full board. Item 7C is Resolution 15-09 in support of restoring required essential public health services funding public health. Greg, give us the same thing you told us, Dave and I appear, real quick.
Okay. Public Health Code was passed in '78. It was mandated that the state would fund any of the mandated services at a 50% rate and the local municipality, the local county would fund at a 50% rate. They held that up for about two years, and essentially we've been funded at maybe a third as opposed to the 50%. And then we got a midstream cut, 2015 right now, through an executive order from Governor Snyder for this particular funding, so now we're back to 2014 levels. The state is about $30 million behind in funding this at a 50-50 rate for local public health, and we want to just bring it to the forefront for our legislators to let them know that as we're making all these changes and mandates, we've got to spend time making these plans of organizations and all these, all these accreditations, and they're not funding us at the rate that the law says they should be funding us. So we're just keeping it out in front of our lawmakers.
Who are you going to send it to?
All of our state representatives and senators, so Representative Padlo, and Fontaine, Muxlow, and...
Dan Lawrence.
Dan Lawrence.
Okay. Any questions for Greg on this? All right, hearing none, then I'm open for a motion.
Would it be okay to have a motion to have this final action tonight?
Support.
I'll make a motion for final action.
Support.
Support.
All right, I have a motion and a support for final action. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Are there any other human service matters to come before the committee tonight? Under Information Only, we have a Health Department February Points of Interest that you can read at your leisure, which I'm sure you already have. Somebody like to receive and file that particular piece?
Make motion to receive and file the Information Only Health Department February Points of Interest.
Second?
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Sleepover here.
No, you're not. You're working. All right, add motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm ready to receive and file.
Mr. Chair, I move that we receive and file packets at our desk concerning human services matters.
Support. Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. German, somebody?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Need to adjourn.
Call to order the Judiciary Public Safety Committee. Roll call, please.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tompkins?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Greathouse?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Do we have any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second?
Move and support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, does any citizens to be heard? Any citizens? Okay, updates? Any updates, Carrie? Or nothing? Conceptual initiatives?
Old business? Might say this is going to be pretty quick. I think I handled everything in the last four years. It's all, you've got a clean slate.
Always said you're a good man.
Got a clean slate.
New business? Any other judiciary public safety matters?
I have one here, Tom.
Thank God.
Attended the CDA meeting yesterday myself, Commissioner Riley, Commissioner Greathouse. CDA Advisory Board meets every two months to talk about different things related to the dispatch operations. Went in front of them yesterday to talk a little bit about the 911 updates that we're currently in with the state plan. Really, if you look at our current plan that we have on file, there's just some things that need to be cleaned up in the document. For example, currently it says it's 42 cents. It's actually 60 cents is the funding mechanism. It still identifies the city of Port Huron as a backup, as a PSAT backup. That's not the case. LaPierce is the backup. Some of the discussion, Clay Township was in the room. We have an agreement with Clay Township for 2020. Some of the discussion came, you know, surrounding some of the recent articles that came out in the newspaper regarding dispatch and so on and so forth. I did bring up, and I got copies for everybody, from Artie Bryson, the supervisor down there, a response that kind of, some of the, and I understand this issue's a little dicey with them down there. They want to maintain their dispatch, so be it, they can do whatever they want. But what I was most alarmed, if you go to page three, some of the comments that Artie had actually written talks about dispatch. I'm going to read this verbatim. "More importantly, I have seen firsthand many times where county dispatch provided wrong information that could have put our citizens and first responders in danger. County dispatch is very busy and sometimes can drop the ball, causing police, fire, EMS to wait for critical information. Would you put your faith in a computer mapping system used by someone 30 miles from your home or reading the information with no knowledge of your neighborhood?" Now, this is three pages, but for Artie to make those comments, and I brought it up to the board yesterday, to say that the county dispatch has dropped the ball and has put citizens in harm's way, that doesn't personally sit well with me. I mean, I can understand there's, like you said, some hard feelings, these types of things there, but those statements, and this isn't, this isn't taken out of tech, this isn't somebody reporting on this, this is Artie actually writing this himself. So, Tom, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to it.
Yeah, I think one of the comments I made yesterday, and I'll make it again tonight, is any dispatch center, anybody in this room, anybody that's in authority of business or can someday make a mistake somehow. Any dispatch center that dispatches hundreds of calls per day, and that's the minor day, and I don't care what dispatch center it is, you occasionally might make a boo-boo. And in doing that, that doesn't make you incompetent. The whole idea with dispatch is to make it a safe thing and help the citizens of our county. And for the comments that I've read in the last little bit, I think it's terrible. And it's, it's more than just slandering and slapping at the county dispatch. I feel they've got a good dispatch down there. I don't have a problem with their dispatch in Clay Township. What I do have a problem is, when you start banging and saying our people up here are incompetent and they're, they're causing people to possibly put their responders in danger, for crying out loud, I spent 20 years out in the fire service, have very good rapport with the police and fire across the state as well as this county. Everybody wants to do the proper thing for your community and the state, police and fire. And for someone in authority to make comments about a dispatch center such as this, I think it's terrible. And I would never do that because anybody can make a mistake. So if someone made a mistake, okay, he made a mistake and was corrected, and if it was enough of a mistake, he probably got his backside chewed off. But that doesn't make it right for someone to come out and slap, or take a slap at dispatchers that are doing lots more calls per day, per year, in our area. And for the whole county, I mean, we're talking one area that we are not dispatching for. And I think our dispatch center does a whale of a job for the calls that they are handling on a daily basis. So I personally am proud of our dispatch. It's not because that I think they're so much better than everybody else in the state, it's just because I think it's a proper thing, is the safety of our people in this county. And I just, I agree with you, Jeff. I think it was, that's a real slap. Art?
I really appreciate what you're saying. And to think that the dispatchers at Clay Township, Clay Township have never made a mistake is ludicrous. And I have a feeling if we did a little digging, we could probably find more than one example of serious errors made by their dispatch people. But that's beside the point. The important point is that back in 2003 and '04, when, when we had all of the public safety people here, police and fire, Tom, you were here.
Yes.
And, and the cry was put us on 800 megahertz systems so we all can communicate, so we can, you know, protect the lives and the safety of our citizens. And St. Clair County went out on a limb, and we, we put in the towers to do the 800 megahertz. We spent the money, we put in a system. Congresswoman Miller went to the bat, got a number of grants for our fire and police to be on 800 megahertz, all the radios and transmitters and everything. Well, those radios and transmitters are now 10, 15 years old, and we're now looking at going to Clements. That's going to cost money, but it's going to provide a better system of dispatch, GPS identification, because so many of our citizens now are calling 911 by cellphone. We'll know where they're at, we can send a responder out and, and provide for their safety. And if they have GPS on their iPhone, we can be standing next to them. We know where they're at. If we have to triangulate between the towers, we might be able to get within 50 feet. But still, that's, that's pretty accurate in terms of dispensing a first responder. So some of the charges that are being suggested here, I think are absolutely unmindful of where we were and where we're going in terms of public safety. And I don't know a commissioner on this board that doesn't put a high value on public safety.
Yes, sir.
I got, I got the copy of this also and read it, and I've got probably three points to make on it. One has to do with, I don't want to throw stones at Clay Township, but the township supervisor said that he has seen firsthand many times, I don't know if we could do that, but I would like forward a letter to the township supervisor, Clay, to provide documentation of those many times so that if we have errors being made at the county, that we can correct those and be brought to our central dispatch attention. If that has not been done, because to make this accusation, he's trying to say that the county is an error in their services, and I don't believe that's the case. We got a federal award, one of the very few throughout the whole nation that got the award when we had the hurricane that came through. And our central dispatch has been commended. And to put this in here, I just don't, it has no justification. If there is justification, I want some documentation to support his statements. Also in his statement, he said that it's a money grab. And every community has the opportunity to have the services that they want for fire and police protection. They have chosen in Clay Township to have a fire public service mileage. From this, the documentations show that approximately $300,000 annually is to cover that service for Clay Township. We are willing to do that as the county for free. That is, and part of his letter says that we don't do anything south of 26 Mile Road. This is a $300,000, and that does not include the upgrades and upkeep and maintenance of their dispatch service, which is substantial. We've seen the costs that we've had here. So I think you could easily look at $5 million, and I'm giving a rough estimate there, but the $300,000 over 10 years. He broke it down to approximately $140,000, but then he's saying that his dispatch also do clerical services, above and beyond services. But we're looking at directly dispatch services. And I represent District 6. They also bring in here that approximately $40,000 was taken away from Ira Township. By the county taking over this, if they, the residents of Clay Township so choose to get, the county provide this service, they will save 300, and they also be able to give Ira Township reduction in the police protection. So I think it would justify that Ira looks at this also to reduce their police force at a cost of $40,000 annually. Those are three points I wanted to bring up.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, thank you. Under Information Only, Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program, approved, budget revised.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we receive and file our information only.
Support.
Move and support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I take a motion to receive and file packets.
I would so move, Mr. Chair. Support.
Move and support it. All in favor?
Aye.
And...
To adjourn.
Support.
Me adjourn.
Meet you halfway with me.
Not tired, are you?
Like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tompkins?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Greathouse?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Here.
At this time, I would like an addition, excuse me, a deletion to the agenda, and that's the report from the St. Clair County Farm Bureau.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make a motion that we remove St. Clair County Farm Bureau project, which is listed as 2A, and further down as 4A from the agenda.
Okay.
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye? Aye. All in favor, I would entertain a motion then that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support. Okay, all in favor, say aye? Aye. opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Seeing none? We have updates from the Road Commission. Kurt?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kurt? Got a short presentation here for you. I'll make it short. How's that? Yeah. Guess what we'll talk about tonight is a summary based on 2014. We'll go back in time, we'll hear a little bit about projects that we did in '14, '15, and '16 as well, what's coming up in the future. As far as 2014 goes... We have updates from the Road Commission. Kurt?
Evening.
Evening.
Kurt?
Got a short presentation here for you. I'll make it short. Guess what we'll talk about tonight is a summary based on 2014. We'll go back in time. We'll hear a little bit about projects that we did in '14, '15, and '16 as well, what's coming up in the future. As far as 2014 goes, we did over, just over $10 million worth of road projects using federal funds alone. And this comes, as you know, as a match, 20% for road projects, 5% for bridge projects. What's interesting, and back in 2014, if you look at the top for Shea Road, the two portions will appear in the intersection at Wadams. That is risk reserve funds that came from surplus revenue dollars or fund dollars from the state of Michigan. And we have to thank our local legislators for that money to bring it back here to St. Clair County. It was roughly $4.2 million that we were able to do work. There is one section, the intersection there at Wadams, and one section of the pier that will have to be completed this year because of the lateness of the season that we did the other work. As you'll notice, as we go through this, there's a number of projects throughout the county. We try to spread those as much as we can. And these are based on numbers and availability of funds for rural or urban funds. These dollars are matching dollars are available to the Road Commission thanks to the voter approval that we have out there. Quarter mill generates about $1 million for the Road Commission for road projects. You look at the bottom there, that 4.99, when we talked about this, for every dollar we received, we get about $4 in return in federal aid. In action in '14, we got $4.99, so that helped out this year. We also have a program, Local Road Funding Assistance Program. Just over $1.3 million worth of work. $600,000 came from the Road Commission, funds that we have available to us. And the townships came up with about $711,000 in funding to help with those projects. Again, that's a very popular program with the townships, and we thank them for the help that they give us with that. Again, road preservation, it's just wedging and norer lays, that type of thing, general maintenance activities that we do throughout our road system. Again, the match money program provided by this board, very unique amongst, throughout the state. 2014 allocated $900,000 in the matching program. And that generated about $2.7 million worth of work in total. The townships overmatched that by $1.8 million, so I thank them for their support.
If I could, Kurt, because I'm a township person, just for the record, townships give $2 to one for every dollar that the county, so that's a big help to the 23 townships.
Yeah. And as we go, you know, as road funding the way it is today, that we're very dependent on their help. And they've been great supporting the Road Commission throughout that process. 2015, we have a very aggressive year this year. It's going to be extremely busy, not only in federal aid, but local road funding as well. Just over $15 million, close to $16 million for the road projects all throughout the county. Some of those funds even come in through category A funds, economic development funds. Work that we were able to pull ahead this year will be down Marine City, St. Clair Township or China Township area, Fredmore Highway, King Road, those types of things. Even economic development funds out in Ira Township, down on Marine City Highway. That's made possible through the EDA. We capture those funds that are available and couldn't do without their help as well. Again, that number at the bottom is hard to see there, but for every dollar we received in federal aid this year, we got about $6.38 in return. It's extremely, extremely well and great for a return on your investment as far as dollars go for the taxpayers out there. Again, Local Road Funding Assistance Program, $1.6 million in total this year. We've got about $780,000 in Road Commission funds and $8.52 in township dollars. And again, this is throughout the county. You're seeing these dollars spent. Anything from small bridges or culverts, road projects, overlays, chip seals, that type of thing. Again, primary road preservation, a lot of chip seals on here, which are a preventative maintenance program that we'll see there. They're not necessarily real popular, but they do help prolong the life of that road and keep it in a condition that's safe.
What's crush and shape?
Crush and shape is when you go in, pulverize the top surface of the road, maybe six inches deep, eight inches deep, pulverize that top portion of the asphalt, mix it with the gravel below, stabilize that base, and then we come in, three inches of asphalt over top of that. So it's a revaping program. The reason we do the crush and shape in a lot of these jobs, so we don't have reflective cracking. You usually see reflective cracking in a roadway even the first, second year after that. Good roll of thumb for every inch of asphalt you put down, you get about one year before you see that reflective cracking. So when that happens, we come back in and do a pot rubber, we call it, place that into the cracks and seal this road back in. Again, matching funds through the Road Commission or the county board as well. Or, I'm sorry, 2016 road projects coming up. So far, this is what we have, and this will grow. If you remember last year, when I was in front of the board, we talked about 2015 and how projects would come forward throughout the year, looking for funds such as category A or any dollars that were spent from other local road agencies throughout the state. We'll capture those when we can. And so far, we're about $3.39 on that. Same thing with road preservation. This is just a snapshot of where we're at. That about $1.2 million for '16. As you know, the sport actually operates the DPW for the county. We do have some upgrades down to wastewater treatment plant this year. We applied for Saw Grand down there for a bar screen project that we had down there, $506,000. We had 50% principal forgiveness on that program through the Saw Grand. We were able to get some work done there, and that shared, maintenance on that is shared with Algon and Clay and Ira Township down here. Transportation funding ballot. As we know, in May of this year, Proposal 1 is coming up. I wanted to touch on that shortly. I know you've had a presentation by some cog in the past, but I thought I'd take a time, just a minute, and take a, talk about this for a minute. Well, what's going to happen with this thing? Right now, gas tax is made up of what you pay at the pump, the 19 cents, the registration fee that you pay at the Secretary of State, and that comes up with your MTF. There is 6% sales tax on gasoline as today as we see it. None of that 6% comes back to transportation. Goes back to the general fund, is used for education, such things as education and revenue sharing through counties and townships, that type of thing. But very little comes back to transportation, other than maybe mass transit. What this ballot proposal, the gist of it is, is they're gonna, the idea behind it, I guess, is to remove that 6% sales tax, replace that with a 1% wholesale tax, or not wholesale, 1% sales tax on general goods, and use that for education, general fund dollars to be used for education and revenue sharing. To replace, to increase the fuel tax, it'll be put to a wholesale tax of 14.9%. That 14.9% will make, have an increase in the gas revenues that we have today. And our revenues as of today, if it took effect today after one year, would be about $2.5 million in revenue increase from what we have today. The gas tax on diesel will be diesel parity. Right now, you pay 14 cents on diesel, 19 cents on gasoline. That'll also be under that wholesale piece, which is 14.9%, so you'll have parity in there. That's always been a rub. Why is diesel taxed much less than gasoline now? That'll bring that up. The constitution dedicates the fuel, or the tax you pay on fuel today stays on roads. Right now, we don't have that. Over the years since '97 and there before that, there's always takeoffs of gas tax. They're looking at different things at the Secretary of State or revenue sharing for, or debt service for the state of Michigan or what have you, to be dedicated for transportation needs. So it locks those funds up, so what you pay at the pump stays on the roads and not to other sources. It subjects alternative fuel vehicles such as electric, compressed natural gas, to an increase in registration fees to help pay for that use of the road. We don't have that today. And also, there's an earned income tax credit for low-income families as well. So there's a lot going on in this bill that makes it somewhat confusing for a lot of people. So there's a little bit in there for transportation, a little bit in there for education and low-income families. It'll achieve about an estimated $1.2 billion additional funding for roads over the next three years, or within three years. Make school fund funding whole, an estimated increase of about $300 million. And revenue sharing as well, about a $94 million increase. It allows, or establishes a requirement for road commissions to competitively bid projects that they do with townships, that type of thing. Right now, a lot of our work in St. Clair County is bid out, so it may not have that big an effect on us. A lot of the work that we will be doing will be based on performance-based work, which is through our MDOT contract, we're a contract agency with MDOT. Right now, I sit on a negotiating committee for MDOT, or not for MDOT, but for County Road Association in conjunction with MDOT. And right now, we're looking at basically performance-based measures that can be done for the contracts that we have within the state right now for our interstate work and that type of thing. It basically establishes warranties for projects over $1 million. That's been a question in the past, you know, shoddy work, that type of thing. Some more assurances on that. And it allows, actually allows MDOT to contract with private sector companies if they want to do that for the maintenance programs that we have here. Now, you'll see a lot of that more in your cities than you will probably your county road agencies because of the way they're set up. I don't think that's a threat here for us. At least I've been told that at this point. But it keeps your county road commissions and your cities on their toes to make sure they're doing the work they should be doing out there for the techs.
Question on the warranty piece of it. When you guys do a job, are inspectors on site majority of the time?
Yep.
So when you talk about shoddy workmanship, is it inspections aren't getting done properly to? I mean, I'm just curious on the warranty.
A lot of it's contract language. What we do here is we follow pretty much MDOT contract language and federal guideline, highway contract language, that type of thing. So we don't fall into that as much. There are county road commissions that'll come out. They'll put bid specs together that may not be as tight as others. And what this does, it kind of tightens up those bid specs to some extent, required bonding for those roads, and puts that contractor on notice if they are having issues out there. But the majority of the road commissions out there now do similar work like we do. They already have the inspectors out there. They have tight bid specs. But it will tighten a lot of that up.
Okay, any other questions for Kurt? Commissioner Rushing?
And I'll call Phil or Adri on this, but in your presentation, you said, "Make local revenue sharing whole, estimated increase of $94 million." That can't be annual.
Yeah, that is, and the numbers...
I take the $94 million divided by our population in St. Clair County.
No, no, not for St. Clair County.
That, okay, that's statewide.
Statewide, yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt, but that revenue sharing is just dedicated to cities and townships, not to counties?
Yep.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
So back to your point earlier, Commissioner Rushing, about the townships providing that match so that they can get the money to do the roads. If they have more revenue, they can do more.
In St. Clair County, we have a unique, and Jeff explains this very well, we have a money match system here where the townships have a money match. We're unique within the state that we...
That we provide as a county to the townships. Any other questions?
Just one comment I'd like to make about the Road Commission. Been on the board 10 years. Have always had great luck with the Road Commission. I think you guys do a great job. My phone personally barely ever rings, and that says a lot about what you guys do. I know in other parts of the state, they were talking about, I think a couple of years ago, they set up legislation which road commissions, they were looking to disband road commissions, I guess, and fall underneath their boards home and so forth. And, you know, I know those relationships don't exist other places, but credit to the Road Commission. You know, when we do get calls, the guys take calls, they file through, and it makes our job a whole heck of a lot easier, so my little cheap plug for you.
Any other questions for Kurt? I have a couple of comments or observations I'd like to make. Did I understand you correctly, as all of our citizens know, we passed the road millage, the quarter mill road millage, and that was dedicated for federal match funding? Did you say we get $4 in federal dollars back for every dollar of our millage?
Yeah, when we went out and sold the thing, we indicated we'd get $4. For every dollar we invested, we'd get $4 return, and we're actually getting better returns than that. As you can see, in '15, we're close to $6.
Close to $6 return on our millage? Fantastic.
If you could, give them a breakdown, because you did really send a road bridge there over the Bell River. And I believe that was an $800,000 project, if I remember correctly. What was the actual cost to the county, the rest was federal funds? Just an estimate, doesn't have to be exact.
About $40,000.
So we got an $800,000 bridge rebuilt to federal standards for $40,000.
Wow.
And that's what the millage did. That's just one example.
I think people need to know that. The other thing, I think with the weather we've been having in the last couple of years, it has to put real strain on your road budget. And I recall you giving a presentation maybe four, five years ago, and you were saying that in that particular year, you had spent like $250,000 for diesel fuel. Today, you're spending almost $600,000 for diesel fuel. Yet the amount of revenue that you're getting from the state for the Road Commission has decreased. Is that correct?
Yes. Even if you look at something as simple as equipment, you know, eight years ago, we were paying about $97,000 for a dump, you know, a truck with a plow and the whole works. And today, they're $230,000.
$230?
Yeah. Steel prices, rubber, just the cost of materials, all that type of thing, they've gone through the roof.
And yet, your money that you're getting from the state for the Road Commission has decreased.
Yes. Operationally, we've done a number of things different than we have back, let's say, 10 years ago.
But you can only do it so far.
Yeah. We're starting to buy a lot of used equipment. You know, it'll be in front of this board Tuesday night for used military equipment again. We bought some equipment through the county before. We put that to use. Some equipment came up over in Germany, and we're in the process of purchasing that equipment. We can, when we can pick up that surplus equipment, it cost us about $15,000. We look at, well, we just had two trucks delivered this week that we paid roughly $15,000 apiece for because you're paying the shipping on them. They're 2009s, very low mileage. I want to say 4,000 miles on these pieces of equipment. It'll cost about $90,000 to outfit these trucks. So we'll be right around $100,000 versus $230,000. So little things like that we're doing out there. And the public won't know the difference as far as, you know, it'll be painted yellow just like the rest of our trucks, and they go down the road, it's safe. But, you know, we're not going to have a turret on the top of it. But it really helps us, and we scratch that dollar a little bit that way.
I know the, at the conference over in Lansing, the Michigan Association of Counties are really promoting the passage of Proposal 1 from the standpoint that it's the only thing out there, and it constitutionally guarantees all the money paid at the gas pump for fuel goes to roads.
Yes, that's a very important part of it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Riley?
Only thing I'd like to comment on, Kurt, and I, to follow up on what Jeff said about the Road Commission. You know, I had the opportunity to do, through my committees the last two years, have your committee on there. And, you know, with the amount of manpower you've got and how well it runs with the manpower and the management, how well they get along, as Howard just said about the bad weather we've had the last two years, we certainly got hammered. And it shows to me great management skill, and it also shows to me you've got a great working force that can work with management to get the work done. You don't hear a lot of complaints. They get out, they hit it, and you see them all over. I think, I have to admit, that I think you've got, you've done a whale of a job. Ken, even you out there have done a good job. You know, but I really think that...
Better throw it down to the brass too.
Yeah, I know, yeah, but I had to poke it the other way. But I really think that, I have to take my hat off to the Road Commission. But I really think that, I have to take my hat off to this, to the road commission for the amount of work you've done with the manpower you've got, under manpower to what you had years ago.
And the shortage of revenue.
Oh, yes. I mean, I think it's a great job.
Well, I appreciate those comments, but like you say, it's really the staff that's out there doing the work. They're very dedicated, it's community service to them, it's the way they look at it. They have family out there in the roads as well, and you know, the credit goes to those guys out there in the field.
It just shows a good working atmosphere, it really does, and people should know that how well you've done the job, everybody else who are the working force.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kurt.
You do a good job, too.
Okay, at this time, we have an update on recycling from Chair Bone.
Yeah, this is, Gary, you want to come on up and distribute the information, if you don't mind? This is something that Matt and myself, Gary has been in the waste industry a long time, I don't even know how many years, Gary, I don't want to put words in your mouth. As all of you know, we have our landfill, and we're always looking at different initiatives for different, you know, for different things. I mean, I sit in a lot of presentations via through the landfill. This is kind of a different one. Gary's going to be just talking a little bit about garbage bags today, ironically. There's some things that we had looked at as far as recycle. Gary has a company that has garbage bags that are based out, made from recycled product. Some of the things, when I first talked to him a little bit, I thought they were biodegradable, you can go right up to the podium there, the biodegradable bags, they don't currently have a product in the biodegradable bag market, but we're going to talk a little bit more about that. But the intent of this is kind of a twofold thing, is, I think on a bigger thing, for me personally, yes, we own the landfill, yes, if you can get biodegradable garbage bags into your landfill that break down in a much faster period of time, they work very well in our bio-reactor. But the other piece of it that I really want to take an in-depth dive on is to help the cities and municipalities, can this become part of their, Gary's got a couple partners in the company, too. Can this become part of the recycling plan that the cities and municipalities use to help fund their recycling efforts? The state of Michigan, and I forgot to print this out, they have monies, you know, it's like anything, it's a grant process. You apply for a grant to get monies to assist in your recycling programs. Is this another tool that would give the cities and municipalities another thumb up, so to speak, if they were to use this to help achieve additional funding? I'll let you talk a little bit, but Gary, this is really baseline, it's early in the game for us. Like I said, Matt, myself, we had a couple different meetings with Gary, it's kind of a two-stool approach to this. I'm going to talk, I think, with Jeff Donaldson with the Solid Waste, take a little bit further look, because as you all know, when these grants are competitive, and if there's any little additional something that you can have in there, then the chances for some funding for this. So, it's not just, it's not just to benefit the landfill piece of it, I think the bigger piece of it actually lies into the abilities for the townships and the cities as far as that portion of it. I cannot guarantee you that that is the case, but also, as you all know, we have our lobbying firm, and if it is something that could fit into that, we need to really look at possible some positioning. We own the landfill, majority of the times, you would never hear of any initiatives like this because landfills are, majority of the landfills are owned by private companies, and they don't, you know, it's a different business model per se than what we're looking for. David?
Yeah, just a couple things. In front of you, I left you a letter from Larry Thompson, the supervisor from Wales Township in regards to fire protection, so if you could review that. And I know that Riley Township, they had the annual meeting, and they're working with Matt in regards to the tipping fees at the landfill, so that's going to benefit Riley Township. There's increased fire costs, especially with the general law townships for their fire protection, but you're going to be saving money that probably will more than cover a couple of years of the additional costs that are going to come from the contracts between Emmett and the city of Memphis Fire Department. So, working with the city on that, or the county on that, they're not only benefiting Riley, but you've got numerous examples of that. Cochreville down south, they got a, they were the pilot program with the program, I guess, Marysville, if I remember this correct, approximately $60,000 they saved with contracting with the county.
Gary's currently working with Clay Township, just signed on for the bag. You want to talk a little bit about the bags, I guess?
Actually, I'm doing some consulting, non-paid consulting to recycled materials. They're the folks that are launching this program, and I'm passionate about recycling. I've been in the waste business, recycling business for 10 or 15 years, and so I'm just trying to get the word out. They have engaged with a company called Potaski Plastics, which is a Michigan-based company that makes trash bags. And the bags that they make are made out of 65% recycled materials. So, when you put it in perspective, as it, it applies to, let's say, St. Clair County, based on national averages, there's 10 million trash bags going into your landfill, which are all made from virgin stock, which is oil pellets. So, this particular product certainly would reduce the amount of oil that would be necessary to make a full virgin bag. And what's happened is there's a big push on recycling, but not the use of recycled materials. Consequently, the demand, supply and demand has, there's an imbalance now. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that are recycling, and there's a lot of product sitting, waiting to find its way back in the material system as something coming from recycled materials. So, the first community to be approached was Clay Township, and they are going to launch, at least in St. Clair County, the first program. They are going to buy the product, they are going to encourage that their residents use and buy the product from the township, and it's more than cost-competitive, and again, it's made from recyclable materials, 65%. The company is driving to even get a bigger content. At one time, they did, not too long ago, I was kind of unaware that there was a change, but they did have part of that bag as being biodegradable, which would have been friendly to Matt Williams in the landfill. However, when they did the test program, the biodegradable part started to biodegrade in the box. So, nobody wants to open up, you know, pull out a bag and have a hole in the bottom of it. But we think it's a good program, we like to see it, there's 2 billion bags, garbage bags going into trash, into landfills throughout this country. So, if you can envision, you can reduce the necessary oil content by 65% by just buying these bags made out of recycled materials. That's a lot of oil, and you don't have to, you know, I talk, I always hear about, you know, the depletion of natural resources, and it certainly has an impact. It has an impact on us, the county, the state, and the country and the world, actually. So, I believe it's a good program, and what, I think what they're looking for is some support from the county, encouraging the municipalities to get a hold of these folks and at least listen to a presentation. And this is the first county to launch something like this. So, if it gets legs, county will get, I'm sure will get a lot of credit for stepping-
Yeah, the biggest thing, I think, for myself, and this is just yours truly talking out loud, is the piece, is it able to assist the townships as far as their grant scoring, recycling piece of it and that? I really think that would be a piece that, if it does exist in the P2 grant process, if I'm not mistaken, if it doesn't, we still have the ability as a county with our lobbying firm to talk to those guys to look to get some of those additional things included. Because I think we, owning the landfill, can be very proactive and get those types of things put into perhaps language. If it's not, and there again, I'm giving you baseline stuff, I haven't taken an in-depth dive, I'd like Jeff Donaldson to take a look at this, but if it does, it would give us a leg up as a county, and to the point, we own the landfill, that's why we were generally out in front of a lot of these types of things. Let's face it, for a private landfill owner, there's no money incentive for them, and we're not, that money incentive's not the incentive for us, it's assisting the communities.
Any other questions for either Gary or Commissioner Bone?
Yeah, Gary's Amtera Group is going to be doing a curbside pickup, I think you're starting this month-
Yes.
-in Clay Township, and along with that, there's talk, and I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Gary, but there's talk of getting trash bags to use for their recycling also, that would be of a different color if we could do that. So, rather than carry out a plastic bin and empty that, and then carry that bin back in at the end of the day, you could put that, instead of, you could take what's in the bin, throw it into one of these recyclable bags that had the correct color on it, that would sit out by the road. On the given day, two trucks are going by, one will grab one bag, I guess the next one would grab the other bag then of a different color?
There was, there's a little hiccup in all of this.
That's the direction it was going.
That was the direction, it's still, still like to move it in that direction. However, the recycling center where, Amtera, the company that I consult to, where they take the recycling, they won't take recycling in a clear plastic bag or any bag. But this isn't the end of the story, so we're going to continue to work with the community and try to meet some medium.
I'm going to work with Gary on this and get with Jeff Donaldson and take some of the, see what possibilities exist. I just wanted to bring this before the board tonight to understand, when we're talking about garbage bags, that you kind of know what I'm up to a little bit, I guess, if it's something that the board embraces, you know, that we take, go down this path and take a look. You know, may transpire into something, it may transpire into nothing, but nothing gained, nothing ventured, and so be it.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
No, I was going to say that I would think that launching the program here in this county is, you've got to get some points from Lansing, because it's a great program, and you're the first. So, they haven't dealt with it yet, but you'll be the first to at least approach them and see if there's something in it.
Matt, you got anything you want to add to it at all?
Yes, just real quickly, commissioners, I think it was about three years ago that we made the decision to stop doing our remote location recycling collection. That may have given the impression to the public that that was kind of low on our priority list. And while it's not, recycling is not at the top of our priorities, I certainly don't want the assumption to be out there with our residents that it doesn't matter, or we don't care, or we're not looking for avenues for recycling materials to go and to collect more. Gary makes the excellent point that the market is very depressed right now, which ends up costing everybody money on collection, because a lot of the materials, as he noted, being collected and processed are not getting put into future products. That really is a key here. Governor Snyder just recently has got a group going, and he is establishing increased recycling goals for the state, because as a state, Michigan is pretty low on the totem pole with the amount of waste that is actually recycled. So, and Commissioner Bone brought all this up to kind of tie all this together, and I just wanted to, you know, put my little two cents in here that recycling is a good thing, recycling is an important thing for us to do, and as a county, if we can help the townships out with their programs and advancing their recycling initiatives, then I think that's a really worthwhile thing for us to do, and I'll certainly work hard and participate in. I just wanted to-
Okay, any other questions for either Gary or Commissioner Bone? Seeing none, thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
At this time, we'll go on to, any updates from commissioners regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none, we'll go on to conceptual initiatives from administration? None? No old business, new business? We have one item, and that is the water trails field day and the request to apply and accept a grant, Coastal Zone Management Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we send this on to the full board?
Support. Supported by Commissioner Rushing, motion made by Commissioner Greitop. Any discussion on that? We're kind of unique in the state of Michigan in that we have the first national water trails, so we'll keep building on that and promote that, hopefully with a whole lot of tourism coming here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, motion carried, thank you. Smiths Creek Activities Report, landfill report, I don't remember seeing that.
It was not attended.
It wasn't in there?
They did not submit one, no.
Okay, I thought, maybe it was an oversight on my part. Other environmental and public works matters from commissioners? Seeing none? I would entertain a motion that information only be received and filed for park and rec financial documents and a Verizon wireless notice for proposed color communication.
No move.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Greitop, supported by Commissioner Riley. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time, I'd entertain a motion to receive and file packets concerning environmental and public works matters-
So moved.
-made by Commissioner Riley, supported by Commissioner McConnell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. I would entertain a motion to-
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Commissioner McConnell has seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
You guys start, and I'll be with it. This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to Order. Could I have a rule call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Heidman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone? Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Greitop?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Okay, on 2A, we do have revised with the 2A on there.
Do you want that at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
And adjournment? I would move that we go into executive session regarding property acquisition at the end of the meeting and adjourn following that meeting. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. I have a motion to accept the amended agenda.
I would so move, Mr. Chair, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. This time, we'll move to three, are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move up to updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, we'll go to conceptual initiatives. Do we have any? We have none. We'll move on to old business, which we have none. So, we'll move on to new business, 7A, which is the PC replacement project final action.
Good evening. Some of you may have remembered, I made a presentation about October about the PC replacements. And so, this request for approval is basically the outcome of that presentation, the testing that we conducted in October. We did extensive testing, worked with a lot of vendors on pricing, and ultimately, at this time, I'm asking for approval to move forward with our solution. I'm asking for final action because we do have a number of PCs that are no longer supported. We're running into a lot of compatibility issues. Clemis, for example, is not going to be able to work on about 25 of the computers that the sheriff's department currently has until we get our solution implemented. There's going to be compatibility issues with the finance HR software on our next update, so that is why I'm asking for final action tonight. We are moving forward with the software-based virtual desktop environment. It's a scaled-down version of what I presented to you in October for budgetary purposes, but we did a lot of testing, and we really believe the solution's going to be good for the county and for the employees of the county, so.
All right, I do have one question for Kerry. This is all fine in the budget, because it is a pretty substantial bill, $530,000. We are taking final action-
We are taking final action tonight, potentially anyways.
Yeah, this is being funded mostly from funds that have been set aside in public improvement that would typically be used for PC replacements, and the Health Department is also, has money in their budget for their portion of the project. So it's all there.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the PC replacement project for final action.
I'd support that.
Any discussion? Any other questions for Tiffany?
Just a quick one. When's the last time we did the upgrades?
Well, we try to replace PCs every five years. However, we have a number of PCs right now that are much older than five years, about 550, in fact, that are five years or older. So we kind of do it on a rolling schedule.
Newspaper had asked me the question, not the newspaper, the radio earlier, and I know it's been a long time, and like I said, technology's great, technology ain't no good when you've got to replace it.
Just a comment. When I was at the MAC conference, they had a setup, Dale had a setup, they were showing the desktop units as well as those with the phone system. And wow, what a difference.
Yes, and it is quite impressive what you can do, technology.
One other quick comment, and I don't mean to belabor this, but one of the other things I said, you know, we've shrunk our workforce pretty substantial over the last how, how many years, you know, and essentially, the technology gives, you know, the people the opportunity to keep up with the workload, and I mean, if you're going to not replace the bodies, you need to be able to give people the tools to be able to do the work, and so be it.
Yes, we are finding that. As departments try to find efficiencies, they're leaning more and more heavily on technology and on the IT department to make that happen.
I want to thank Tiffany for her efforts, so. Do we have any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 7B, fleet repair and maintenance agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send this on to the full board.
Support.
All right. Carrie, could you give us a rundown?
Sure, I can start. Back in December, our contract with First Vehicle will be ending very soon, so we put this, our fleet maintenance out to bid back in December, and actually, it ended up being bid out three separate times in order to give the local vendors ample opportunity to bid. Personal letters were sent out, and we reached out to them multiple times. The initial bid that went out, the insurance requirements were too high for most of our local vendors to meet, so we did work with our insurance carrier, and those were dropped significantly, which is why it was rebid. And then it was rebid again, just to, and letters sent out to make sure all the local vendors knew that it was happening. We have decided to recommend awarding it to multiple vendors located throughout the county, so departments with vehicles have a choice on where to go. Our purchasing coordinator, Melissa Krollcheck, is here, and she was the one involved in coordinating the bid effort and working with the departments, and she could answer any specific questions if anybody has any?
If you would, Melissa, please come up. Nice enough to sit through our meeting chair, so.
On TV, at least.
Give us some feedback.
Make your kiss.
Like Carrie said, we did have to reach out to local vendors several times, and we did come up with four that we're recommending. Two is more of a full service, and two is doing more preventative oil change, that kind of work. This will hopefully save us some money and some time, and definitely will help the departments to have a choice. They'll be able to schedule easier, maybe become a little more efficient when it comes to oil changes and whatnot. So I don't know if you have any questions for me regarding that?
Go ahead. I have a question. Let's say, now we've got the list of the different vendors here. One vendor's not specifically the oil change guy, per se. I mean, you can go to, you can go to a couple of these different vendors to get your oil change if you're out and about in the community. Is that the ideal, or you're using one specific person for that particular service?
Right. There's the variability of choice there for oil changes, yeah. There's ones more on the north end, you know, so that location-wise, you know, again, be a little more efficient.
Mr. Riley? Personally, I think it's a great idea. I think it gives the flexibility, but I think the savings for the departments is going to be really, really appreciated.
That's what we're hoping.
I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Heidman?
One of the problems of being around here too long, I remember when we first talked about fleet maintenance and dealing with it, and I could not get an answer as to what it was costing us to do fleet maintenance. This is like 10 years ago. And my only question, concern right now is, do we have, and probably a question for you, Carrie, do we have an accounting system set up now where all the departments, when they do fleet maintenance, bang, it goes into a particular category, and we will know the cost of that?
Yes, we will be able to track that cost in our accounting system, and all these vendors as well will be able to provide us with a report of maintenance that was done on each vehicle, if you need a specific report on a specific vehicle.
Excellent, excellent. I like the idea that it gives our department heads, elected and appointed, a little more control over how they run their affairs. I see that as a plus.
Of the four locations that I'm looking at here, Melissa, are they all in the north end of the county? Is there anything down south? I guess I'm thinking about the sheriffs running cars through Chinatownship and through East China and through Elginak on a regular basis. Is there something down there for them to get the oil changed down that way?
No, the farthest south we have is Marysville. I did reach out to a lot of, you know, some in that area, but, and received a little bit of interest, but no response.
I think you'd have an insurance problem, liability, where positions that can provide the service just weren't qualified to meet the requirements of the county. So you did come up with four of them, and I think the sheriff's going to like this, because hopefully, you know, doesn't tie up a car for a day to get oil changed, so I think that's going to be a big plus. Initially, I have your concerns, and I appreciate what Howard brought up, is that we'll have a way to document this, and I don't believe we had that vehicle in place to actually do that in the past. Getting first service, I think it was a cost and a blessing at the same time. So, but they do have good documentation, you're able to track each individual vehicle, and now you'd be able to track it and be able to document. The only last thing I have is, do you have an estimated savings that this might have for the county?
We do not, because it's going to depend on where, we'll have to see what the usage is. You know, after a period of time, we'll be able to track what we were spending versus our new costs. However, without knowing what specific vendors the departments will go to, we really won't know until it's tried.
Would six months be a big enough window, or should we look at a year?
We could do either.
We can review and.
It's the next chapter in vehicle maintenance.
All right, do we have any other comments? And do we have a motion to adjourn? Yeah, we had a motion for this full board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7C, phone system support renewal, DNS communications.
Chairman, I move that we send this on to the full board.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7D, proposed human resources manning table revisions. Do we have a motion?
I would so move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to answer any questions or give an update, but, you know, administration for a while has wanted to revise the manning table. It's been one of our initiatives to add HR director, and there's been some vacancies in the HR department with some turnover, so we felt that now was a good time to be able to present that. You know, really, in organization our size, with all our unions and complexities, we really need a director that's able to monitor our compliance daily and also look for cost savings ideas and different programs that might be available to our employees, add to savings.
I just happened to, I was there for something else, and I happened to be when you and Bill were talking about it.
I think we've been talking about this for a little longer than that.
All right, we'll move on to 8. Do we have any other Ways and Means matters? Seeing none? Information only? Do we have a motion to receive and file packets?
I would so move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. This time, I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session and include adjournment at that.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.